Welcome. Would like to call the July 1st, 2019, meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. Our first action is to all stand and say the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terrific. Ms. Porras, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
President.
Commissioner Bradley?
He stepped out for a moment.
Okay, yes, but for the record, I know that he's here. Commissioner Garvey?
Present.
Vice Chair Yakapony?
Here.
And Chair Dugan?
Our next item is public comment. Public comment is limited to items that are not on tonight's agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, our general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Do we have any public comment this evening not related to items on the Seeing none, we'll move to the approval of the minutes of June 17th, 2019, Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the meeting minutes from the last meeting?
I move that the minutes be approved as read.
I'll second.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yakapony?
Yes.
And Chair Dugan?
We will now enter the public hearing section of the meeting. We have two matters before us tonight. First, we'll consider the design review of 765 Laurel Street. The procedure is first our planning staff will review the project and provide us with their recommendations. Then we'll hear briefly from the applicant if they would like to present. Then we'll open up for public comment and then we'll deliberate as a commission and make a decision. Staff, would you like to present?
Yes, evening. Yes, good evening, Chair, and excuse me for maybe sounding a little bit off during my roll call. I don't know if members of the public realize, but we did have a new election of officers. And so Chair Dugan, congratulations on your appointment as chair, and Commissioner Yakapony, your appointment as vice chair. And then for the record, I would like to welcome new Commissioner Ellen Garvey. This is your first meeting this evening and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And with that, I will go ahead and introduce Kevin Berry. Kevin is our assistant platter with the city and he joined back in February. And he will be giving the presentation this evening. And he and Lisa Costa-Sanders would be available for any questions you may have on the item. So with that, I will turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, Commission. Tonight I am presenting an application for a conditional use permit in a bar and lounge at 765 Laurel Street. The applicant is also requesting design review approval for in addition to the existing building. The site at 765 Laurel Street is centrally located in the mixed-use downtown core zoning district adjacent to Frank D. Harrington Park between Laurel Street and Calgill Alley. The land use designation is mixed-use medium density according to the land use element of the general plan. The previous use of the site was a dry cleaning business which seized operations earlier this year. The applicant and owner of the property, Kevin Canfield, requests a conditional use permit for a bar and lounge that involves that will feature live musical performances involving piano and live singing. Since the applicant is proposing to construct in addition to the building, design review approval is also required. The municipal code assigns design review authority to the Planning Commission for projects that also require a conditional use permit. The proposal consists of a 415-square-foot addition to the existing building and minor structural changes to the front of the building along Laurel Street. A total of two parking spaces will remain onsite located to the rear of the building. The purpose of the addition is to accommodate storage and office space, which is accessory to the bar and lounge The interior improvements will consist of about 1,000 square feet dedicated to the bar and approximately 1,600 square feet of accessory uses including office, in-office, storage, and restrooms. The renovated interior space will consist of a six-inch-high podium for musical performances, a 250-square-foot service bar, and table and booth seating. The exterior improvements to the building include the construction of a new enclosed trash, I'm sorry, a new trash enclosure to the rear of the building and a new front facade as shown above. The facade features aluminum wood-clad bifold doors, a metal awning, and wood siding. Note that the sign shown here in the proposed facade view is conceptual in nature and is not subject to design review by the Planning Commission tonight. The applicant will be required to apply for separate staff-level design review for any new signage. The proposed hours of operation are Sunday through Wednesday, 4:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m., and Thursday through Saturday, 4:00 p.m. to 1:30 a.m. The applicant anticipates staff consisting of one to two bartenders, one barback, and one security guard on a nightly basis. The conditional use permit requires that windows, doors, and other exterior openings shall remain closed after 10:00 p.m. nightly in order to comply with the city's noise Since the site at 765 Laurel Street is located in a parking assessment district, the municipal code allows the applicant to pay a parking-in-leave fee rather than provide additional required parking. The applicant has decided to pay parking-in-leave fees for eight parking spaces due to both the proposed change in use and the removal of existing spaces due to the building addition. Payment for the in-leave fees will be due to the city before the issuance of a building permit for the tenant improvements. The conditional use permit will require the applicant to notify the city if any changes to the proposed parking plan is made. All mandatory public notice procedures have been followed according to the municipal code. The Planning Division received one comment regarding the concern that the loss of the dry cleaning operation may lead to less daytime commercial activity on Laurel On the screen is a motion to be used should the commission decide to approve the applicant's requests. I have included additional slides outlining the required findings and criteria for granting designer view approval. Staff and I are available to answer any questions that you may have about the zoning regulations, and the applicant, Mr. Canfield, and his partner Kit are here to discuss the proposed bar and lounge. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, do we have any questions of staff?
Kevin, thank you for the introduction. The noise ordinance, the 18 dot 21 dot 050, what are the, a couple of the key points of that that might relate to this use?
Just checking to see if Kevin, if he would prefer to answer that, but I think I can go ahead and step in here. But some of the key provisions in the noise ordinance are really outlined. I just wanted to get this off the screen. I didn't know that would happen. So the key provisions of the noise ordinance are organized in such a manner where particular uses are outlined. And based upon those particular uses, if it's a commercial use or a residential use, it has its own corresponding noise threshold. And in the city of San Carlos, we use decibels. So in the residential area, it would have a lower threshold for decibels rather than commercial. And if you want the numerical figures for that, I could pull those up should the commission request those. And then, of course, the thresholds change based upon the time of day, daytime versus nighttime. And so the noise ordinance is an ordinance that's always in effect. It's not something that is triggered because of this application. Any particular use in the city, whether it's operating now or through a new construction or project, would be required to abide by the noise ordinance. And the way it's generally monitored is we take any kind of concerns or complaints, they're basically delivered to the city on a complaint basis. So we would be able to investigate and do a noise reading onsite. And should there be a finding that a noise threshold was exceeded, it's up to the owner or operator to make changes to the building to bring it down to a level where you're not triggering or going beyond the noise threshold that's outlined in the code. So I don't know if the applicant, it may be in their presentation or would like to be able to respond to some of the measures that they may be taking in order to comply with any potential concerns or, you know, about exceeding the noise threshold. But staff did include a condition of approval that all of the openings would need to be closed at 10:00 p.m. and beyond, and that's similar to a condition that we put in place for Savannah Jazz, which is another live entertainment operator that's further down on Laurel Street.
Great. Thank you very much. I have a question. Could you clarify the number of parking spaces that would remain? I see two are being removed. Are there still some left?
Yes, right now at the existing building, there are four tandem parking spaces located to the rear of the building. The building addition will lead to the removal of two of those parking spaces. So there are two left onsite.
Thank you.
And what specifically drives the requirement for eight spaces? Is that just the square footage of the business or the fact that it's live entertainment?
So when a change in use results in an increase in 10% of the, I'm sorry, when there's more than a 10% increase in the number of required spaces due to the proposed change in use, the applicant is required to provide additional parking spaces. Or if the property is in an assessment district, the applicant may choose to pay parking-in-leave fees. So in this case, the required number of parking spaces for a bar was 13, and the number of parking spaces for the dry cleaning operation was seven, and that's the difference. The difference is six parking spaces that they would be, that they need to provide or pay a parking-in-leave fee for.
I see. A total of, and that 13 calculation, that's a bar at that square footage? Is that how it's determined? Okay.
Correct. The requirement for bars is one space per 75 square feet of public area.
Okay.
And the requirement for retail, which is, which dry cleaning operations are classified under, is one per 300 square feet of gross floor area.
Any other questions of staff? If the applicant would like to speak to the project, we'll allow 10 minutes.
And through the chair, I believe the applicant has a presentation, so give me just maybe half a minute to bring up the presentation for the applicant.
Sure thing.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to present the plans for our proposed business. Ms. Garvey, welcome to the board. You and I are going to share this date as our first official time on the commission. Our plan is to bring a high-end style cocktail lounge to San Carlos. The establishment will complement many great restaurants and boutique stores that already line Laurel Street and the neighborhood. Our theme is a classic cocktail lounge, bringing sophisticated and classy twist to the more common bar. We want to become an integral part of the San Carlos community by providing meeting and social place and being available for public and private gatherings. We intend to open at 4:00 p.m. We plan to be available to accommodate local businesses. Friendly and sophisticated place to meet and network with the business community and locals alike. What better place to do that than a good happy hour? Restaurant goers will also benefit from our services by offering an alternative place to meet either before or after dinner. As we mentioned earlier on, live piano entertainment on the weekends, playing classic-style popular music, providing a comfortable and pleasant atmosphere for San Carlos residents. We don't intend to be extremely loud. We're not, that's not the goal, so we can definitely keep it, keep it to the decibel level that's needed with the code. We provide California Guard carded security, which will be present on nights the entertainment is provided. Will be a type 48 license, which means no food service and only adults in the premises. This, I think you saw already, which is a plan of what we intend to do on the inside. And then I'll leave you with this slide, which is a rendering of the proposal of the outside of the building on Laurel Street. Thank you very much for your time.
Terrific. Are there any questions of the applicant? I would just ask, so this in-leave fee, $143,000, are you going to lease this facility? Are you the owner of this facility?
We're the owners of the facility.
You own it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, understood. Okay, that was my only question.
Right. Thank you.
Just curious, is, do you have experience in this kind of a business before? It's an interesting idea.
Yeah, so there's, there's four people involved. Kevin, my partner that's here, and then we have two others. Kevin and his partner run a bar and lounge in San Mateo. And one of their partners has two places in San Francisco, one which does some entertainment. And Kevin, actually, his place in San Mateo does entertainment. So, yeah, we have, we've experienced.
Right. Thank you.
All right.
And there's no food service, per se, no meals? Would there be some snacks or?
The intention would be to have something available for people, cheeses, you know, cold cuts, that kind of thing if they wanted. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Do you currently have the license or that's something yet to be applied for?
That's something we have yet to apply for. I think this was our first step to make sure this is something that we can move forward with.
Understood.
Yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant? Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Great. This is a public hearing, so we can hear from the public now. I do not have any speaker cards. Have any been turned in? Is there anyone here who would like to speak about this agenda item? Okay, hearing none. We can, as a, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing on this matter.
So moved.
I'll second.
Terrific. All in favor of closing the public hearing on this matter? Say aye.
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 Aye. Hearing all ayes, the public hearing is closed. We can now deliberate. Commissioners?
I'll move that the Planning Commission grant approval for the request of a conditional use permit for a bar, lounge, and the design review approval for a net of 411 square feet addition to the front and rear of the existing single-story commercial building at number 765 Laurel Street. That's APN 050 dash 154 dash 150.
Through the chair, before you call for the question, staff, just noticed a typo in the conditional use permit. We would like to clarify. So that's condition number four. And it talks about the hours of operation. The second line, "The applicant shall provide for at least one security guard," page 13, packet page 13. "The applicant shall provide for at least one security guard nightly between the hours of 8:00 p.m. to closing." It should then continue to read "when entertainment is present."
I'll accept that.
Thank you.
Could I, before I respond or we respond to the motion, could I just check, are other businesses in San Carlos open this late?
The other live entertainment business that I mentioned previously, in fact, it was the most recent conditional use permit for another very similar type of use for Savannah Jazz. I believe when we looked at that staff report, they are open actually even a little bit later than their use. Yeah, and there's other bar facilities that are open later, like the Rail Club on San Carlos, El Camino Real, and a few other bars in downtown.
Thank you.
But field research is encouraged.
I'd have to change my Saturday night, evening time, you know, wouldn't I?
I think it looks like an attractive establishment to have, to diversify our Laurel Street lineup.
Yeah, I agree. Savannah Jazz was a great addition to San Carlos, the live music venue. And do you have a particular flavor of acts that you intend to bring in? I mean, they're very jazz influenced, so.
We'd be more classic rock and roll, maybe, sort of Billy Joel, Elton John, that style, probably reaching to the demographic of what San Carlos is. The place that one of our partners has in San Francisco does something similar. And that's the type of music. Again, classic rock and roll, classic pop, you know.
Got it. Some would say like cover bands, is that?
Well, it won't be as cover bands as such. We will have dedicated piano players that will come in and play, that will pick from, that will play, will alternate week in, week out. So it will be generally piano players, no drums, no, it's sort of a whole system that works.
I see. And like, what's the maximum number of entertainers you think would be on stage?
Oh, two.
Okay.
Yeah, two at any time. We'd have two small-sized pianos that would almost play off against each other, if you can picture that. I think they call it, you know, it's typically dueling pianos. Crowd gets into it, they cheer for one side or the other, or they tell them to stop playing one song and play a different one, and they send up requests, that kind of thing. Yeah.
No karaoke?
No, no karaoke that we've, we haven't, no, we're not thinking about that.
Have you picked a name for this establishment?
Faith and Spirits is kind of what we've hit on. Yeah.
That sounds nice.
Thank you.
Well, the motion was made, and I would like to second that motion.
Terrific. The motion's been moved and seconded. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof? Excuse me, Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yakapony?
Yes.
And Chair Dugan?
Yes. So that is approved. Good luck, gentlemen. Hope it's a successful project for you. Great.
Congratulations. Look forward to coming on down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. All right, we'll move to the second item on our public hearing agenda this evening. Consideration of a resolution recommending the City Council amend municipal code, Chapter 1816, referencing affordable housing. First, we'll hear from staff on this matter.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to present Adam Aronson with our Economic Development and Housing Division. He will be making this presentation tonight. And maybe you can also introduce your legal counsel that you have with you as well, Adam. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Commission. So also with me, Eric Phillips. He's been our legal counsel on this particular item. He's going to come up and also help introduce some parts of the presentation. So, nope, there. Sorry about that. All right. So if the goal of producing more affordable housing in San Carlos, the City Council has directed staff to amend the city's affordable housing program. And so the amendment that we're making is essentially to line up our ownership and our rental requirements. As they currently stand, our ownership requirements require development of seven or more units to actually build units as part of the development. So 15% of the units have to be below market rate. Or if it's two to six units, they can have the option to pay in-leave instead. For rental units, right now, the requirement states that they just have the option to either pay the in-leave fee or alternatively choose to build 15% of the units at below-market rate. And so what the proposed amendment does is it seeks to remove rental development in in-leave fees as a compliance method and instead require that rental development to build below-market-rate units. And so this is what the amended requirements would look like. So you'll see that, for the most part, they're pretty similar. For ownership developments of seven or more units, it would still remain the same, 15% below-market rate, and it's 10% at the moderate income level and 5% at the low-income level. And then for rental developments of seven or more units, we'd also require 15% below-market units, but it'd be 10% at the very low income level and 5% at the low-income level. And then they would also have the option to pay the in-leave fee if the development is two to six units. So while the amendments include the removal of affordable housing in in-leave as an alternative for projects of seven or more units, there are also still a few other alternative means that developers can use to be in compliance. So for example, here, they could increase the total number of below-market-rate unit bedrooms. So that would say, if they're required to build five one-bedroom units, they could perhaps propose building four two-bedroom units. They could also offer to provide a greater level of affordability. So rather than, say, five moderate-income units, they could do four low-income units. They can also propose to build the units off-site at a different location within the city. And if it's an ownership unit, they can choose that the below-market-rate units would be rental units instead of ownership units. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Eric Phillips, who's going to walk us through the legal framework of this.
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, my name, my name's Eric Phillips. I'm an attorney with Goldfarb &amp; Lippman. We're special counsel to the city on housing and land use matters. I don't just represent Adam. He didn't bring his own lawyer to the hearing. But I did want to just give a little bit more background of how the ordinance got to the place that it is now and what legal requirements you should be thinking of when you're considering the ordinance. So back in 2009, there was a court decision called the Palmer Case, which put a hold on city's abilities to have affordable housing requirements in connection with rental housing. They could only charge impact fees, although they could continue to require inclusionary housing in connection with ownership projects. So when the city last updated its affordable housing ordinance, the Palmer rule was in place. So the city was not able to have a default rule of requiring onsite affordable units be developed in its residential rental projects. In 2015, an inclusionary housing case made it all the way up to the California Supreme Court, challenging the legal framework underpinning inclusionary housing and saying that a nexus study should, should always be required. The California Supreme Court rejected that argument and instead held that the city's inherent police power, its right to regulate general health, safety, and welfare concerns, gave it the power to regulate just the way it can with other price controls or rent control, with the limiting factor being that the requirements can't be so high that they're confiscatory, that they keep a developer from being able to earn the opportunity for a fair return on their project. Then in response to that, the California Legislature amended the government code to undo the Palmer decision and specifically give cities the ability to require onsite affordable housing in connection with rental developments. So today, the way the rules of the road look is that the city is able to require onsite affordable housing development in connection with both rental and on-sale residential develop, for-sale residential development, excuse me. The only limitations are that the requirements can't be so high that they're confiscatory. And in connection with rental developments, the state law says that in order to make sure that the requirements are not a burden on housing production generally, if requirements are above 15%, then HCD is authorized to request an economic feasibility study. But there's not a prohibition on having- But there's not a prohibition on having higher requirements. The other limitation that the city has is that it has to offer alternative compliance methods, and the city definitely has alternatives structured into its ordinance, even with the changes that are before you tonight. The one amendment to the alternatives is to remove the automatic in-lug fee option for projects with seven units and more, but there are still other ample alternatives to make sure that the city's complying with AB 1505. So the city's covered on that front.
Could you just educate me a bit on the economic viability study? Like, so that's, who requires that? And does that potentially grant relief for a developer if it's not viable to build with affordable housing? I mean, how does that play out?
Sure. So there's two options under the city's current framework. So the ordinance itself has a savings clause in the event that the requirements, as applied to an individual project, if that would represent a taking of the property, the property owner can, in connection with their application, present economic data and make their case and look for case-by-case relief. It's kind of like just an escape hatch for unusual facts and circumstances. More generally, HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, is authorized to ask an economic feasibility study if the city was requiring more than 15% of units be developed onsite. And that would ask the city to take a look at the cost of construction, the cost of land, available rents that could be returned, and factor out to make sure that its affordable housing requirements were in the straw that breaks the camel's back and keeps new housing from being developed. That was definitely part of the legislature's concern when they adopted 1505. They didn't want a community to adopt, say, a 50% inclusionary requirement as a smokescreen from preventing any sort of housing development from happening.
I see.
So I think that's, those are the general parameters that we're working within. I'll be available for additional questions, but I'm going to pass it back to staff for discussion of next steps.
So in terms of next steps for this item, so the city council plans to review and offer a first reading of the ordinance next week on July 8. After that, there'd then be a second reading of the ordinance on August 26. And then the new requirements, if it is approved, would go into effect 30 days after adoption, which would occur at that second reading. And so with that, we're available for any questions that you may have.
I have some questions. Would you kind of get at what the potential impact of this change could be? And so the first question is, what's the current proportion of projects which took advantage of the in-lug payment option?
So in terms of apartment units, do you have a better idea of that than me, Lisa?
For rental, you're saying for sale?
In terms of, well, for sale, it's required right now, but for rental units, how many are taking advantage of the actual construction, I suppose?
The in-lug provision applies to for-sale units today. And you can either request to pay the in-lug fee, or you could provide the units onsite, right?
For rental units.
Right. And I'd like to know what the...
So I'm aware for for-sale projects that are seven or more, I'm aware of one project that has requested payment of in-lug fees rather than providing them onsite. Wheeler Plaza did it through the development agreement process, because the council at that time wanted those funds directed to another project. I don't have the statistics for rental, though.
The one, one ever? So it's a pretty small fraction, I guess.
For the ownership units.
For the ownership units.
For rental units, most of them are currently using the in-lug fees and not building the units.
Right. Probably the only exception to that would be the Transit Village, so they opted to provide some as an alternative of paying the fees. And correct me if I'm wrong, they decided to provide some onsite.
Yes, that's correct. I believe they ended up building 10% about there. This would have required them to build 15%. So the council's goal with this particular ordinance is to increase the units of housing that are produced below-market rate.
And the economic cost of in-lug versus providing units, are they approximately on par?
Yeah, so the cost of actually providing the units is, to the city, much less than if we were to go with the in-lug fees. So I think the most latest assessments we've seen is, to actually build one unit comes in an average around $600,000. Our unit comes in more, our in-lug fees come in at more between $100,000 and $200,000 for each unit. So it's a fairly big difference.
That explains the low usage of that option. That's all I have.
Just to be clear, so the law chained to allow this adjustment to our zoning, but we're not obligated to make this adjustment to our zoning, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And my perception is, so this will mean we will have more dispersed affordable housing within developments as they become proposed. Is there a concern with staff that, you know, we recently approved, what was that, like 800 Walnut or something like that, which is all affordable housing? And I believe that's what we did with a buildup of in-lug fees. So I guess, is there any concern on staff? Has it been analyzed or discussed? You know, will we no longer have that opportunity to sponsor 100% affordable projects, given we won't be receiving these in-lug fees?
So to complement those residential in-lug fees, we also have our commercial linkage fee program. And I think historically, we've received a much greater amount of funds through those fees. And so those will still exist and still support those types of developments.
And can you just explain that briefly? So, you know, principally, so this would be like the hotel development or a Big Buck. I mean, I can't imagine the bar we just reviewed is going to be kicking in that much money to this, but can you just explain that to me in a nutshell?
So it applies to any new commercial development that's adding a certain amount of square footage. So for, let's say, retail and restaurant new developments, it's a fee of $5 per new square foot. For hotels, it's $10 per square foot. And then for office and industrial and R&amp;D, it's $20 per square foot. So like, the new Alexandria developments are offering $20 per square foot once they come in.
I see. Yeah, that's substantial. And are those in-lug fees, those are specifically, that will be used for affordable housing?
They go straight into the Housing Trust Fund.
Okay.
Similarly, there's an off-site provision ability as well for the commercial linkage fee. So they could choose to provide housing off-site rather than pay the fee.
Oh, like, so Alexandria could develop affordable housing instead of paying that fee?
That's correct.
Okay, interesting. And $20 a foot, so like, what is Alexandria proposing? I mean, they have a couple monsters coming, don't they?
Well, we don't have an application before us, but yes, it'll, all the combined development would be a substantial amount of money, yes.
How far away is off-site?
Within the city limits.
Okay.
I think to note, there's kind of another challenge with for-sale condo development being affordable, is those people kind of being able to, when you own a house, you're looking forward to the value going up and being able to move up and out of that home eventually. And that's kind of, you know, the part of homeownership that I think a lot of people look forward to, is the value increasing. What we're seeing, though, with kind of long-term affordable condo developments is that value really doesn't keep up with the market, because it's tied to income. And so it's really difficult for those people to move up. They also do, we need to make sure that what they're paying is appropriate as well, it's a percentage of their income. And so we need to adjust that for homeowners association dues. So it does make a little more sense on the rental component to have affordable units compared to the for-sale component, just from a monetary standpoint.
Do staff think that this change will add, you know, five units, rental units, or 20 rental units? What, like, if you had a projection over the next couple of years, what's going to be different?
Yeah, I mean, it's just kind of rough estimates, I'd say, at this point, but maybe 25% of our new multifamily developments are apartments and rentals. So I'm not sure how many have developed in the last year, but that could be another five, 10, 15 units over the next year that we wouldn't have otherwise.
I mean, that sounds about right. I mean, you know, we were always getting, you know, people interested in what they can do with sites. And I think having this option available, you know, ultimately would allow us to capture more below-market rate units, rather than just having it apply only to the ownership.
Have, I'm curious, in California, in the Bay Area, whatever frame of reference is appropriate, have other cities modified their zoning regulations similarly? And so, if so, assuming so, does this mirror that, map that, those changes? And second, has anybody decided, yeah, we like 15, but we really want 20? And have they gone out and done more than 15 in their ordinance?
Yeah, I think Eric might be able to speak this better than me, but I'm sure, I know that some cities have done higher requirements. Sometimes I think they do 20%, but then have a higher minimum unit requirement. But may I let Eric speak to some of the other cities and what they're doing?
Yeah, so since the, since 2017 housing package, it has been a focus of cities to try and increase the onsite affordability production. It's very common for jurisdictions to be updating their ordinances, or some had them pre-Palmer and just had stopped enforcing them, and they've gone back to enforcing them. Part of that is because the rules around housing production have changed, and the city is being held more accountable. So having onsite affordable units that the city can take credit for is, there's more state incentive to do that than there had been previously. So there's a high interest in actually capturing produced units within jurisdictions. I'd say that the 15% safe harbor that's in the statute is the most common threshold, but there definitely is a lot of interest in communities ongoing above that. I have worked with other jurisdictions in the region where they will then do an economic feasibility study to see if their markets can support higher thresholds or deeper affordability. And in some cases, they can, in some cases, they can. It depends very much on the local real estate factors at that point.
And staff, do we know, did council choose 15% as a, I'll call it a safe harbor conclusion? Or did they, you know, was there some mathematics behind this? How did they think about it?
So we actually conducted a Nexus study when we were formulating our BMR ordinance, and that was the number that came out as being the most impactful, while still not prohibiting development necessarily. And I should also clarify that later this year, we're going to be reviewing our broader BMR ordinance to see if that number is still appropriate, and whether our income levels are appropriate as well.
Thank you.
Building on that, I think our BMR housing allocations from the state, we, like many cities, are behind on that. It sounds like this proposal helps us achieve that goal.
That's correct. So like all cities in the state, we have what's called a regional housing needs allocation, the RENA numbers. And so we have certain numbers that we have to meet during every eight-year period. Our period right now is 2015 to 2023. And so right now, we are on track for our market rate allocation, but we're pretty far behind on our below-market rate allocation. So making a change like this would help us to catch up on those numbers.
And what's the implication if we don't make our allocation?
Yeah, so there's Senate Bill 35 that put into effect that, so cities that aren't meeting their market rate allocation, if a development comes into town that's more than 10% affordable, it receives ministerial approval. So that would bypass public hearings and SEQA. For us, for not meeting our below-market rate requirements, that means that any development that comes into town that's more than 50% affordable would get ministerial approval.
I'm sorry, 50, 5-0?
Yes.
Okay. This is, it might be a bit off-topic, but when I was reviewing our affordable housing for purchase, is that right? The covenant on the affordable housing burns off after 50 years? Is that right?
I believe it's 45 years. That's correct. But it's 45 years under a single owner. So if they sell it to someone else, then that would restart.
But how about if it's transferred within their family?
So if it's transferred within their family, we have to recertify the income. So if the new family member still meets the income requirements, they can stay in that same for, that period would apply to them. But if they don't meet the income requirements, then they would have to sell the unit.
I see. They would have to sell it at that point, okay.
Back to someone that meets those.
And again, it's a little off-topic, but I just, 45 years is not a long time for real estate. How did we fall on that number? And it just strikes me that we'd want that to be 100 years. I mean, why would we ever want a unit to fall back to market once we've done all this work to make it below-market?
So there's a couple of layers to that answer. The first is tradition. When the state had been regulating through its redevelopment authorities, 45 years was very common regulatory period for affordability covenants. It also tracks with other ownership programs and state law, for example, the minimum requirements under state density bonus. Part of the underlying theory for why it's not a forever covenant is that it still can, even if it, even if it has the theoretical possibility to come off after 45 years, certain lenders will be more comfortable with that. It becomes a little bit easier for our homeowner to finance, even if it's not especially likely for that homeowner to stay in the unit for 45 years. Most likely, the sale would be subject to the resale restriction and then restart, as was just described. However, for the underwriting, a 45-year covenant has a better residual value than a 99-year covenant or a forever covenant. So it does help with the ability to get financing for the individual units. Having said all that, some jurisdictions do require longer terms. 55 years is common. Some jurisdictions will go out to 99 years. So it is a policy decision that local jurisdictions can control, though the 45 to 55 year, I'd say, is most common.
Okay. Is anyone aware of any below-market unit going past the covenant and becoming market? Like, I don't know how long these programs have even been in place.
I think it's happened for a few units, but we haven't had many that were built more than 45 years ago, so it's not too common.
Okay. It's off-topic. I'll stop talking about it, but I would say that should be 99 years personally.
Yeah, if a unit becomes available for sale, the city does have first right of refusal to buy that unit.
At the market rate, at that point, right?
Well, not after 45 years, at that point.
Yeah.
Another background question. The deficit that we have in the city for low income versus the affordable level, would there be any way to encourage the low-income category?
So there are, we do have some incentives for developers to kind of veer them more towards that direction. So for example, we have city density bonus, and that means that for every unit that's built at the low-income rate or lower, the developer receives one bonus market rate unit. So that's one way that's encouraged. There's also the state density bonus that is even a little more favorable. So for example, if a new development comes in and is 5% very low income, they can achieve a 20% market rate bonus.
Thank you.
Trivik, any other questions of staff? Great, thank you, appreciate it. We'll move to public hearing. I have no speaker cards on this topic. Is anyone here to speak on this matter? If not, I'll seek a movement to close public hearing on this matter.
I'd second that.
All right. All in favor of closing public hearing on this matter, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it, the public hearing is closed on this matter. We can now move to deliberation as a commission. Commissioners?
Seems like a step in the right direction. It's not a huge step in terms of the, it's not an aggressive step in terms of pushing the boundaries, but it's, seems like it's a middle-of-the-road step. That's appropriate.
Interesting to hear that the city and council are going to look at the percentage for ownership, and assuming this passes also the rental, whether it's 15, or 16, or 18 later on in the year. If council were to select a higher percentage threshold, it would automatically apply, or we have to go back through and take action on both measures?
Well, maybe I should let Adam speak, but it's my understanding that should council make those amendments, any amendments that would be made through this particular action that make its way to city council after the commission? that make its way to city council after the commission this evening, they could package it all together and just make one amendment.
That's correct, yes.
It seems to me that meeting our below-market rate housing is very, very important, and this takes us one step in that direction.
Yeah, I agree with that. I would be concerned if we didn't also have those commercial in-lu fees. I think our flexibility as a city to do projects like that, was that eight units, 10 units on Walnut, 100% affordable housing, that's something we will always, I think, want to do as a city, and I don't think this will disturb that. And I would say, although I like those developments that are 100%, if you actually look at the history of public housing, if you will, distributed programs are more successful. I mean, in my view, just on a policy basis, it's better to have more affordable units in market development than it is to have 100% developments. I mean, you have, you know, the history goes back to the public housing towers in Chicago and things like that. When you concentrate those type of units, you can have bad effects. So on that level, I think this is good because it will provide for more units in the developments distributed through the city. Are there any concerns before we move forward to approve this matter?
This is not a concern, but just a comment that I feel compelled to say. The housing problems that we have in the Bay Area are severe. We know, we hear the housing crisis all the time. There's another side, a completely different side of housing, is housing for the homeless. Now, it's not so much in our backyard here, but certainly in the region, this is a huge problem. That being said, I will move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend the municipal code in San Carlos, Chapter 18, Point 16, affordable housing programs to impose rental affordable housing requirements and make other conforming amendments, and to find such actions are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA.
Hold on a second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yakaponi?
Yes.
And Chair Dugan.
Yes.
Terrific. That matter is approved for recommendation of the city council. Thank you for the hard work and the staff, appreciate it. That concludes our public hearing this evening. We can move on to reports, correspondence, and general information.
Yes, through the chair, the staff does not have any recent actions to report to the commission concerning city council this evening. Thank you.
Then before we adjourn, I too would just like to welcome Ellen Garvey to the commission, and we're very happy to have you onboard, and may this be three or six years of professional enrichment for you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm honored to be here, and I'm looking forward to working on the Planning Commission. The work of the commission is so very important, and I hope to be able to contribute in a meaningful way.
Terrific.
And, excuse me, through the chair, just before you adjourn, I was only speaking on agenda item 7A. But before we did close, I just would also like to kind of jump to agenda item 7D, and then certainly if there's anything the commission would like to add before we close, we can do that as well. Just a friendly reminder, our next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, June, excuse me, July 15th. And we have two items on the agenda for you that evening. And then just an update on the status of the summer recess. Some of you may have seen an email that I send out, but typically, we like to be able to give the commission a summer recess with two meetings canceled during the month of August. But because of some projects that need to be heard, we try to work with applicants to come to a reasonable compromise. So this year, we will be canceling only one meeting in August, and I did get a chance to poll most of you, and it looks like we're landing on keeping the August 5th or the first meeting in the month of August, and then canceling the second one, August 19th. So I will go ahead and send out an email confirmation about that, but I'm also using this as opportunity for any of you that, you know, where that date doesn't work, you can let me know, follow up an email. But it looks like most of you will be able to attend a meeting on August 5th, so that's what staff will be aiming for. And then that's all I have for this evening. Thanks.
Terrific. Thank you.
Can you, sorry, can you say what are the two items on our next agenda?
Sure. One of the items is actually an appeal. This is an appeal of staff's decision regarding a property's eligibility for the city's Hillside Overlay District, that's at 2520 Melundy. And then I believe we also have 1091 Industrial, which Lisa Costa-Sanders will be presenting in.
Sure. So that 1091 Industrial was approved with a planned development for the hotel site. That developer's decided not to proceed. The property is sold, and the new owner would like to resend it back to the GCI, the General Commercial Industrial Designation. And unfortunately, we don't have a provision in our code where that automatically happens, so it does require an ordinance through Planning Commission and city council.
Terrific. Yeah, that's helpful to see some sense of what's coming up, so thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Terrific, we are adjourned. Thank you.